Yeah.
Well, I asked about Lisa, how can I speak on thirty items and five minutes, I mean five minutes for hours?
What?
Tony, I see that I've got mail today I get.
You said, you said it was.
But at least I could say I'm moving forward.
Oh, you want, oh, you just wanted to add. Contest, I, I don't, it was, it was a contest, uh, everybody had to come up with a sign, that's all.
Okay, well, whatever you can do, because I really don't know that, I'll tell them if they return to you or as a staff.
Jacqueline, Jacqueline. If you're gonna speak on agenda items, you have to write the agenda item down. So you have to, so when you come up, you have to speak to specific. Okay, then write one through thirty, so you're gonna.
Okay, yeah, one through thirty, we talked about it already.
Okay, so you're gonna, so what we'll do is make sure, let's go right along, speak on number one first, number two.
Chris, Chris. Hey, are you guys allowed to sit next to me, Kevin? Mr. Jenko. Mr. Jenko, sir, are you allowed to sit next to me, Kevin? Are you, are you sure you're allowed, I mean, I mean. We don't have to put you on the other side of the room, but.
Hey, could you get Chris? Okay.
For the, the two tier tax system, is that, they said it's twenty percent that's shipped towards homesteads, or is that kinda like evening it out, is that what?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna do the abandonment first, let's do that, and then we can do, you know.
So we'll make the announcements here.
Six o'clock.
It's a walkout.
We ready?
Yep. Okay, we're gonna call the December fourteenth city council meeting to order. Today, um, we're gonna start with Councilman Tompkins, leading us in the prayer of pride and allegiance.
O God, the Father of us all, we humbly beseech thy, with thy wisdom and knowledge, to guide and direct the deliberations of this council along the path of truth, justice, and righteousness, so that what it decides for the welfare of our citizens may also redound in a greater honor and glory, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any bounds.
Thank you, Councilman Tompkins. Um, before we go to public speaking, just a couple announcements in regards to a couple items on the agenda we're gonna move around. Chris Major.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman. This evening was supposed to be, we were supposed to have, uh, public hearings relative to, uh, four proposed abandonments, those were on the last agenda. Uh, they were supposed to be today, uh, the notification that was supposed to be, uh, indicated in the newspaper was not uh, done in a timely fashion, unfortunately, we are going to reschedule those, and that will be an item that will be on the agenda at some point later on in this meeting.
Let's have a public hearing on a couple, um, abandonment of streets, we will not have that tonight, we'll have it at the next full council meeting, and we'll be voting on that later in the agenda. Um, the second thing we're going to do, um, we have a resolution in honoring, um, Rob Bennett, um, it's item number twenty-six, I'd like to make a motion to move that to before the administrative meeting starts, before the public speaks.
Second.
Okay.
Councilmember Banks.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak.
Yes.
Council Chairman Spambauer.
Yes.
This item has been approved.
Okay, see, we're, are you gonna read the?
I would have Vicki read it.
Yeah.
Unless she wants me to.
If Rob would like to come up.
I'll do it.
And before he come up, I'd like to thank, I mean, the resolution will dictate what, um, you're being on for, but thank you for all your service.
Whereas, Robert, Rob Bennett runs the social media page, Rob Shots, with about twenty-seven thousand followers, and whereas Rob grew up listening to the police scanner with his father, and together they would occasionally go to police or fire incidents, and whereas always fond of taking pictures, Rob invested in his first real camera in two thousand sixteen, and then soon became a regular on many fire and police scenes. The photo he posts on his social media page makes it the place to go to for what is happening in Niagara Falls. And whereas Rob's work is very much appreciated and valued by all our public safety officials, and both the superintendent of police and fire chief are grateful for his honest portrayal of the work their departments do. And whereas Rob Bennett is at many community events, always taking photos and sharing them for all to see. His work has been recognized by our local newspaper, and as a result, he now freelances for them as well. Whereas Rob Shots is now the go-to place to find out the happenings in Niagara Falls, we are grateful for his har- hard work and passion. And now therefore be it resolved that the City of Niagara Falls Council and Mayor Robert M. Restaino are proud to recognize Robert Rob Bennett for his positive contrib- contributions to the City of Niagara Falls.
I think it was just on the page, everybody, let's go down.
Rob will come down and get a picture with you? Okay, before we go to the public speaking, just a couple rules for public speaking and meeting conduct. You may sign up to speak on specific agenda items or for the good of the community. If you're speaking on more than one agenda item, you should state that when you're speaking and when you're signed up. If speaking about an agenda item, please refer to that agenda item at the very point you come to the podium. Speakers are addressing the city council as a body, if you would like to address an individual council member, please do that separately outside the council meeting. Please re, please be focused on the agenda item. If you, we've had speakers come up, and they are not focused on the agenda item, I will ask you to refocus. If you can't focus on that item, I'll ask you to sit back and speak for the good of the community. Um, the council will not respond to questions or statements during the meeting, this is an opportunity to share your ideas, not engage in conversation. This portion of the meeting is not for personal grievances either. Please use the decorum expected speaking for this body and or attendance at this meeting, please show respect for all individuals that are present at the meeting. Okay, we'll move on to our public speaking.
Uh, the speaker number one is John S. is speaking on item number twenty-eight.
Mr. You can't say that last name?
I am John S. Vazki, I reside at twelve forty-six eighty-nine Street, and I'd like to talk about agenda item number twenty-eight. You know, I'm all in favor of decommissioning boards and commissions that are no longer necessary. But one, the Global Educational Channel Committee, with so much remote learning going on, do we really wanna be move away with that? You know, was that commission ever given an objective, an agenda, any learning skills of what the city is special for model? If you could, I'm asking the council, if you can answer no to any of those questions, just table that commission. I also like to talk about, we're decommissioning all these, have we ever thought about adding commissions, like ones for Centennial Park? You know, the city's divided into four legislative districts, maybe we took one resident from each district and had one of the council members be the chairperson for that, and let the people have a voice in what's going on? And this way, a council member could always let a resident know what's going on in their legislative district, all hands, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Jacqueline Pryor?
You know, Jacqueline, hang on, I don't hear that, that microphone, I don't think's on.
Clear, it's on agenda items one through thirty, it's a thirty, uh, uh, agenda item tonight, is that correct?
Right, and we'll have you, you have five minutes, let's start with number one.
I understand that, I understand.
Let's go in order, start with number one.
First of all, um, the, um, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know where, the clerk or whatever, she, um, I asked her actually, in, in thirty agenda items, really, if, you know, how many seconds or how mu- how much time would you have to actually do an agenda item? So I'm trying to do an agenda item in five seconds, okay?
Item number one is city clerk's leave for the month of October.
Thirty agenda items in five seconds, people, okay? So we'll go, we'll skip, so don't worry about it, I'll make it into the five. Okay, that's, you know, what is, I don't even know what the agenda item of one through four is, so we'll just, don't worry about that, okay?
Jacqueline, would you rather speak for the good of the community if you're not prepared to speak?
No, no, this is agenda items, there's, there's many on here.
Okay. Which item are you speaking about now?
Uh, the change orders.
Okay.
Uh, I see it's a change order on number five, that means change order, that means more money, correct? Can you tell me how much more money is that gonna have to be put in?
Well, as I said, this isn't a time for ask question, you have to, the agenda items were online.
Okay, I'll put that in the fall act for you. Uh, okay, number six, approval of change order, that's another increase or money or some adjustment, correct? So I'll put another fall order in for that. Well, that's okay, we'll do the numbers later. Approval of, and you know, I would wish that you can please, for the good of the people and for understanding of what you're saying, don't do acronyms, cause you know, D, C, J, S, that almost look like my initials. But so, so for people to understand actually what you're saying, because I don't know what D, C, J, S is, you know, can you put the full, uh, you know, so people don't have to wonder? Appreciate it, so I, I can't even do that agenda item, but once I get the full what that is, I'll fall active. Number eight. Approval of proposed, uh, uh, addendum of agreement of property management city market. Now, this is the city market that is now the city that was supposed to now be a landlord? So this is landlord property of the city? That you want somebody else to take care of, but you said you were. Uh, nine, approval of reappointment of city marshals, hmm, who is that? I don't know who that is, so I'll fall active. Um, approval of recognition in, uh, reorganization in police department, I don't know what that means, fall active. Approval eleven, approval of contract with V I A relative to implementation of three-one-one system. Well, if the three-one-one system has to do with anything that says Niagara Falls, you might get to the library, okay? Uh, I think the system just upgraded probably a week ago, probably a week after the mayor announced, or a couple of days before the mayor announced that he wants to be reelected.
Jacqueline, please keep the comments related to agenda items.
No, 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 no. Approval of contract, B J A one-six-five-seven L L D B A, Genesee Valley Ford for fleet vehicles for the city of NF, what does that mean? Very difficult to read for anybody, you know, what is this, you know, everybody don't wanna go back to school, but if I have to do the schooling, then I will get all the abbreviations at the next meeting. I hopefully, you can accommodate me with all these abbreviations, and I'll just put it in a packet that I'm gonna show later on for the good of people, which I got for you. Uh, approval of contract for prefro material LLC with a purchase of concrete. Don't know what that is, fall active. Approval of contract for Kenworth of Buffalo for the purchase of dump truck plow for the Department of Parks. Fall act, we'll skip. Approval for contract, let me see how many minutes, forty, oh, well, well, let me get down to nineteen. Approval of contract with M B C, don't know what that is, fall act, um, and, uh, all these other ones. Just let you know that I didn't get all to other, all of them, but I will fall at every last item on this agenda. And I have a lot to say for the good of the people, you all know what's going on in this city, and you all need to be ashamed.
Agenda items, the agenda items are usually, the agenda is posted on Thursday or Friday morning on the city website. It takes another few hours to get the supporting documentation, so I'd like to tell the last speaker, you don't have to foil any of those, they're all online, so. Then, then, I'm not gonna get in, we have a library in Niagara Falls, New York that can be utilized. But, um, so everyone knows the agenda items with the description of what's on the agenda is online.
So I'm simply here to, uh, to, to learn more about some, uh, community concerns and, uh, just reiterating what I've been hearing and been hearing from community residents and taxpayers, uh, that have questions, um, that we simply wanna have more of a understanding from, about, uh, which is item thirty. Uh, I think it's important to acknowledge also, you know, to our leaders, uh, your willingness.
As, can you, can you put that microphone up, I'm having a, it's the small.
Okay, thank you, can you hear me?
Yep.
Right, so I'm just saying, I'm here to, uh, to learn more about some of, uh, community concern and just reiterating what I've been hearing from community residents and taxpayers uh, that have questions, um, and simply wanna have more of a understanding, uh, about item number, agenda thirty. I think it's important first, uh, to acknowledge your willingness, you all, uh, to serve our city, uh, say thank you. I think it's important for me to also say that I know, uh, you as a city councilor and mayor cannot always make, uh, everyone happy issue to issue. And I don't disagree with all decisions that you have made, uh, as our city leadership, but what I cannot agree with, and what I cannot ignore and agree with is when I believe the community as a whole is not being fully considered and neglected, and what brings me here today is the Centennial Park project. I understand that the con, I understand the concept of the project and the benefits of what it can bring for both residents, uh, tourists, uh, but the means and how we get there is in question. Uh, neglecting the community to achieve this goal is my concern, and when I say neglect, I'm referring to the November twenty-first public hearing, uh, where there's a possible request that the community development block grant budget can be cut by up to forty-one percent, uh, which is very concerning on top of the fact that, uh, this can create approximately a twenty-year debt, uh, for the city of Niagara Falls. If this is really a thought, uh, which again, I'm questioning, I just wanna learn more about, uh, is this really, uh, fiscally responsible? It also makes me wonder if this is a project truly, uh, that the city of Niagara Falls aspires to get done, or is this something, uh, more or less that the state is pushing? Uh, because the means and how we're aiming to accomplish, accomplish this project is, you know, not fully making sense to me, uh, from a fiscally responsible, uh, perspective. Uh, community development block grant funds, uh, they're meant, uh, for the community, uh, low to moderate income residents, and the Centennial Park project, uh, the area, to my knowledge, has been designated more as a tourist area. Uh, so I question where the Centennial Park project, uh, is meant to go. Where exactly is the community in that area? Where is the youth in that area? Uh, is there even a park or elementary in that nearby area? Uh, the area is surrounded by vacant property, so is this the best location to utilize community development block grant funds? Uh, meant for residents and the community, so I question, how is this helping our kids or even our residents? I know, uh, Mayor Restaino, you know, you, you spoke on, uh, wanting to bring integrity and fiscal responsibility back to the office as well as tackle poverty, uh, through job creation, spur economic development, and also making the city more business friendly. But again, when we talk about using, utilizing community block grant monies, uh, which is for the community, uh, this takes away from many, uh, initiatives that a lot of these agencies can utilize that money to help build it by our population, our residents that are suffering, um, as far as homeless youth with housing, uh, uh, you know, uh, it's man, different, it's a numerous and plethora, uh, different work agencies that we can talk about. Uh, but the last thing that I just wanted to talk about as well is, uh, during my master's in business administration program, there was this philosophy that we talked about, which is the seventh, the seventh generation principle, uh, which comes from the Iroquois, it's a philosophy that the decisions we make today should result in a sustainable world, seven generations into the future. So again, learning about the impact that this decision can have as far as utilizing C B D G funds, this possible loan, and how we can go on a debt for twenty years, is this the, the best and most sustainable option, uh, to accomplish this project? So I just have questions, and, uh, I just would love to learn more about it, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Azim. Yep.
Greens, how you living? How you, yeah, listen, I, I talk.
Hello, Ms. Stanley.
How are you? Um, agenda item number six, you know, I can do sound, that is fatal situation, you're gonna lose one of you, that's fine, this is gotta be authority of the works. My response to this agenda item is, I need the stadium to be more accessible for our community across the board. I've been watching it sit there, you can offer at most the park to have a food truck event or light pitch. I would love to see a plan in place or procedures that once this project is completed, how, how can the community use the facility, not just from just the sports side of it, but a concert event to make this thing more than what it is? For example, the John Newon Stadium in Buffalo is a multi-use athletic facility, we have boxing, we have community events in there, they have little concerts in there. I don't make sure that we are not falling behind the curve as a city, putting our money, investing in things to keep our focus limited. Uh, when it comes down to stadium, I just wanna see it used, I wanna have access to it, wanna be able to use it, wanna be able to have, give a million dollar insurance policy, whatever I gotta do, call the artist to come and pull up, and get the light going in this inside there, and produce something, and do things that are not just sports only. But if that's not the case, what's the point of doing what I do? Cause it's been sitting there for a very long time, and they got a problem issue, they got a car broke a long time ago, somebody, to fix those situations. But now, we gotta, we gotta put the money in, I, I just want to make sure that when it's all set in there, that we have access to the stadium to do what needs to be done to bring money to the city, and give our children something to do. You got three minutes left, thank you. All right, and what happens is, I personally think that we are putting money into things, and we doing what's already been done. And we're not necessarily looking at nuances, we're not advancing, what's, what's popular, what's present, what's, what's, what's happening? What is the full possibility of this stadium upside up? The audience, the sport, but I wanna be able to have access to it, the high schools access to it, if I decide to have a little league team, or whatever the case is going on, I just wanna make sure that we have access to this one, and more than just the parking lot. All y'all been giving us is the parking lot, uh, my church had invented it, invented there, uh, within the last five years, we got the parking lot. The food truck situation, the vendors, we got the parking lot, give us more, then the parking lot, that's all I have to say, thank you.
And, and one comment on that first, so to, so everyone understands, um, the renovations being done to Hyde Park Stadium are being done through A R P funds. One of the criteria of A R P funds is what we're using is for is community enhancements. Um, when we approved that budget, um, some months ago for the, for investment in Hyde Park Stadium, the conversation we had at this table and with the administration, and the administration, it will be a community facility. This community will have access to that facility, it will not only be a baseball facility, there will be procedures in place so the community has access. So I think it's important for everyone to know that. All done with speakers? Todd, did you sign up for the, we have you for the good of the community, did you sign up for an agenda item? If you wanna speak to the agenda items, we'll, we'll switch your name to agenda items, just keep on the agenda items, thank you.
I'm speaking of agenda, I've got this, one, three, eight, nine, eleven, twelve, fifteen, fourteen.
Okay, let's take them one at a time, speak, number one, why don't we start with, as you go through them, just speak to them.
Number one. A lot of claims here, I can see why we, we raised the outside council budget, um, up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for twenty twenty-three. Number three, it's just, uh, a typo, it, it says FOIL, F O I L, I believe it's supposed to be F O I A. It also states that, you know, we're the honeymoon capital of the world, and we, we're earning, uh, eighteen hundred dollars a month in income, and only twenty-three thousand dollars for the whole, the whole month, which is a, is a consolation. Start looking at revenue. Now to agenda item eight, the approval of proposed addendum to the agreement for the city market. I'm concerned that you hired a property real estate company. I'm concerned that you hired a, uh, property real estate company and in the actual, um, support documents, there's a, uh, first of all, we're making an addendum a couple of months later, but you're adding a fifteen percent markup for pest control landscape and it's no removal as this, um, vendor doesn't do that. I'm kind of shocked that, that any property real estate management company doesn't do pest control, landscape and, and snow removal. I think that's, you know, kind of property management, so it just doesn't make sense. Number nine, the city marshals, I, I personally think that some changes need to be made. That's all I'm gonna say on that item. Number eleven, three-one-one system. I heard just now that there's been some changes, but from every time I've used the three-one-one system, I get another, I get a phone number to call to get my problem solved. In other cities that I've used three-one-one, they address it right there, they give you a, a tracking number and they respond and follow up. I have not had that happen once. The approval, number twelve, approval of contract with the fleet vehicles. I, I think that's a little bit egregious, um, but I'm surprised that there's no titanium or, or, uh, ST Ford edges, you know? If you're gonna go big, go big. Item fifteen, back to the revenue from number one, it'd be nice if, if the police department's gonna get license plate readers. I think you could earn some revenue by driving down the alleys. Um, last, every time I drive down any alley, there's car after car after car after car. Who knows how long they've been there? Again, for number twenty-four, looks like we're behind the eight ball on our outside council budget, item of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's costing us one point three mil. Number twenty-seven is the city council meeting schedule. Well, I'm happy that you're going back to two meetings a month. Sometimes it's the first and the third meeting of the month, sometimes it's the second and fourth, sometimes it's the first and the fourth, sometimes it's the second and the third. I think, you know, that's kind of difficult for the community to respond, and I'm speaking for myself, but I, I imagine others as well. Number twenty-eight is critical too. I'm gonna run over time, but number twenty-eight, you're, uh, disbanding all these committees. I volunteer for the compliance review board, I volunteer for the financial advisory panel, I volunteer for the fiscal advisory board, the home improvement registration review board, I volunteer, if I'm the only one on the committee, I'd love to see some, some progress in the city. And then the last item thirty, the last item in the resolution, resolve that the city council hereby encourages all residents of the community to likewise.
Todd, that's time, thank you for your comments.
To likewise communicate the support of this project to their elected officials. Can I finish?
Five, that's five minutes.
In the resolution, it says, resolve that the city council.
Todd, your time is up, you will be required to sit down.
Hereby encourages, you're writing in the resolution that the city council encourages the, the people to support Centennial Park, and we don't support Centennial Park. We don't support Centennial Park.
If there's an officer here. Todd, again, I ask you, just respect the rules we have, that's all you have to do. Okay, let's move on.
Administrative update, control report.
Any administrative update or just through the Agenda Items? Dan Hofer, your report is as good as it was last time.
Let's take a second here for it to load up. All right, so tonight, what I want to provide is an update, uh, on our parking, our downtown parking operations and also tribal revenue. So I apologize maybe for those in the back who, the numbers might be a little small, but, uh, what I have here is, uh, through November thirtieth, our revenue and our expenses in our parking operations fund, and our parking operations fund is the downtown, uh, parking meters, the parking ramp, the, uh, parking lots that we have, and, uh, the various parking agreements that we have with hotels and other businesses downtown. Uh, this is a comparison of revenue from, again, through November thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, comparing it to twenty twenty-one. I took twenty twenty out of it just because of, obviously, the pandemic, and then I have twenty nineteen prior to COVID. Uh, so the first, you know, you can see essentially across the board, uh, the parking meter, uh, has exceeded twenty twenty-one, however, hasn't gotten back to pre-pandemic levels. However, with the installation of the gates downtown at the ramp and the lots, you can see the significant improvements, uh, in revenue. Uh, and, uh, the, uh, the parking agreements that we have downtown, there's still, uh, you know, monthly billings to go there, so that's relatively consistent, but, uh, and as a reminder, in twenty twenty-one, the parking lots were, uh, closed for most of the year just due to the, uh, getting the, getting it ready for the gate installation. Uh, so overall, we're at a little more than three point five million dollars in revenue, uh, which exceeded, exceeds twenty nineteen levels, and not only that, we, our expenses compared to twenty nineteen are, have gone down. Uh, we have a budget this year of a net income of a little more than, it's about one point nine million dollars. Uh, so as you can see here, we're at about three point, you know, about, almost three point one million dollars is our net income. So it's significantly above budget, uh, you know, one month to go, uh, you know, it, it's a, it's looking like a good year for, for parking in terms of, uh, you know, comparing actuals to budget from what that ultimate, uh, net income figure could be. And again, we had a one point nine million in the budget and, uh, we might be, you know, possibly close to three. And then, uh, this year, this, uh, in late October, early November, we received the quarter, the Q-two, uh, tribal revenue payment from the state, and, uh, it was a little more than three point one million dollars. Uh, what I have here is year over year, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty and twenty nineteen, the Q-one and Q-two payments that we received. Uh, you can see, uh, when you just look at twenty nineteen prior to pandemic, you know, we haven't gotten back to those levels yet. However, there are improvements, uh, in both quarters for twenty twenty-two compared to twenty twenty-one, which is good news. Uh, obviously for Q-two, uh, compared to last year, it's better, you know, twenty twenty, the Q-two was obviously the year that they were just shut down for the majority of the quarter, so that amount is obviously low, but, uh, at least it's, it's trending in the, in the right direction in terms of increasing. However, we haven't gotten back to that, uh, pre-twenty twenty levels. The, the Q-three-one is usually the, the larger payment, is that's the, the majority of the summer months, so once we get that payment, you know, we'll update you again. And that's it.
Any questions for Dan? Another, another good report, thank you. Um, just a couple of things in regards to community happens. Um, the Packer Core Community Center is hosting its first winter clothes drive, where's low, where's looking to collect various underclothing for kids between the ages of five and thirteen. Um, anyone who's interested in donating to that, acceptable items are undershirts, underwear, scarves, socks, new, in new condition only. Donations will be accepted, um, through December fifteenth, um, at the community center at forty-three hundred Pine Avenue, so if anyone is interested in doing that. Um, and just one announcement, we, we had a couple postings in the Niagara Gazette regarding, um, the city council seeking individuals that are interested in serving on city boards. We have positions for the historic planning board, um, historic preservation board, planning board, track advisory board, and zoning board. Interested candidates can email me, the deadline is December sixteenth, so if you're interested, you should email me tomorrow and I could send you out an application, okay? Um, let's move on to, um, reviewing Agenda Items, but we're gonna make a couple adjustments here.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there are three items that we would be walking onto the Agenda Scene. Uh, first will be, uh, proposal number thirty-one, which will be relative to enacting, uh, check three-seventy of the Niagara Falls County Department of Urban Services, kind of adult use candidacy, this is a location commerce, a lot of.
I make a motion?
Second.
You know, excuse me, you know, no, wait, no.
Excuse me, Jaclyn, I, I will call the police and ask you to leave, you do not sit down.
How can I speak on what you're talking about right now with thirty-one? What you're doing is illegal. How can you walk on an Agenda Item?
I am gonna ask you to sit down, you can ask me after the meeting.
I'm gonna leave, because if you keep doing these like this.
Let's move on.
Councilmember Myers.
Was there any walk-ons, did I not?
Jaclyn, I'm gonna ask you one more time, or I'm gonna make a call to, to the police department, you will be removed.
You've been called, no, because I'm not doing nothing, I think you're out of order. You don't walk anyone out of here. This is what they always do, and then you, you, you think these people got time to play with you? Don't get your phone out. Get his phone out, let him get his phone out.
Tony, you want a call?
Do it for next time, do it in thirty days, because we got to do it in thirty days. We're looking to the mayor to get permission.
Any, any recommendation?
No, he's asking the mayor to.
Okay.
Yeah, they tried to.
Okay, let's move on, we will, we will ask you to sit down, please.
Discuss about thirty-one. Any walk-ons and I speak.
So, go. Let's move the mo, motion moving on.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Can I, yes or no? Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanbauer.
Yes.
This item has been approved.
So you don't have to address the people, right? No, we try to size the people.
You can address anyone tomorrow if you want to, outside the meeting.
This is the meeting, to address you. How can you have walk-ons and I can't hear you? You're so wrong, Mayor, look at me, remember? Look at the people when they speak, because, what are you laughing at? You're, this is irony, the American rest plan.
Should we call the police?
You're a hard city, right? Not, you don't even live in the city, honey, don't you? You don't even live in the city, and is he gonna be appointed again for the next election? Because it was supposed to be temporary, it wasn't.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask one more time.
Don't worry about that, okay? Because Officer Chigarelli was here, and you know what he said? Good job, Jennifer, good job.
There's, uh.
Thirty-one, thirty-one, is there a walk-on?
Yes, let's move forward. If we have to talk over, we'll talk over them.
Back to you guys, any walk-ons are we able to speak on?
There is, there is.
No, you will not be able to speak on them, you will have to count, contact the councilman separately.
Okay, so tell me the reason why, why do we gotta listen to walk-ons?
Go ahead.
There's a second item, this is regarding, uh, this is, we had this item number thirty-two to be added, this is relative to referral, uh, proposed amendment to the city of Niagara Falls zoning ordinance and, uh, zoning regulations related to the use, cultivation, production, sale of recreational units to the city of Niagara Falls and Niagara County planning boards, referring to the Niagara Falls zoning ordinance amendment to the zoning, or to the planning boards of the city and the county.
Okay, before we move it forward, councilman, you have a question?
Yeah, I think, I, I, um, because I'm listening to what, uh, Ms. Pryor's saying, and it, it does seem kind of wrong if we're going to walk an item on and not allow the people to speak. I mean, it's, it's something, it's, it's something that wasn't placed on the website on Thursday or Friday, so we are all, everyone else knew was about thirty items. So when you have thirty-one, thirty-two and thirty-three, and you don't allow the people the opportunity, one, to read it, and we just got it tonight as well. So I'm not all that enthused, I mean, I understand it's a lot, I, I mean, some of it could be simple business, I understand that as well, I think, but at the end of the day, um, I, y'all, you, y'all know me enough this year to know that I'm about that level of transparency to say, hey, okay, if, if it just got walked on, how are we gonna vote tonight? From a pure place, because we don't have time to sit down and really digest it, although, you know, Mr. Mazel spoke about it, I mean, I think it's, it's, it's about, it's about culture, and I want to make sure that we create a healthy culture of how we, one, allow our constituents, these are the people that voted us in, you know, allow them to have their opportunity to fit, set their eyes on, and it, it doesn't matter because we're go, it's a, it's a vote.
Correct.
So I think so, my thing is, is I'm, I'm, I'm not really feeling, especially if it's not something that's really time-sensitive. If it was something that was like tonight, like, listen, we just got this information in right off, hot off the press, we gotta get this done and it can't wait until, then I'm like, okay, well, hey, let's talk about it, whatever the case is, but if that's not what the case is with this, I'm not really okay with it myself, so I'm just gonna be honest.
Mr. Mazel. Before we go on, I think it's important to explain how this is time-sensitive and why it's, why it's being walked on, and this going across New York State, this is happening across municipalities about cannabis, and it's related to the Office of Cannabis of New York State, and if you would like to explain a little more so people understand why this has been a walk-on, I think it would help.
Mr. Chairman, the state has, has just, uh, passed some of the Office of Cannabis, Cannabis Management, it's just, uh, put forth regulations with regard to the regulation of, of cannabis businesses and licensing in New York State. This is going to be a major item in twenty twenty-three with regard to, uh, in the time, place and manner of, of operations of, of, of cannabis distribution and cannabis, uh, production in the city of Niagara Falls. That's why, again, this is item, uh, the item that was proposed by, uh, both yourself and, and, and Councilmember Tompkins is, uh, important to put forth right away because, again, this is, this is something that's going to be, uh, a, a major item in twenty twenty-three. Uh, again, this is, uh, file, and again, we're following the procedures and the, the legislative schedule of the meetings, and this is typically when items are added onto the Agenda. So again, uh, again, this is.
Okay, thank you, I make a motion, um, to move this forward one second.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanbauer.
Yes.
This item has been approved. And, uh, there will be a third walk-on of this, uh, all members of council, is due to the, uh, this relates to, uh, this will be on number thirty-three. At your last meeting, you, um, scheduled public hearings for today with regard to amendments of, uh, four, uh, unutilized streets in the city, in various areas, um, due to some issue, you couldn't, uh, put forth the proper notes in the newspaper, or anything else twice, and that wasn't done at this point in time, so we're just looking for, uh, uh, moving those public hearings to the next regularly scheduled council meeting, which is proposed to be on January eighteenth, and of course, we have an item on today's agenda that is setting the schedule for twenty twenty-three. So this item will be relative to rescheduling of public hearings on the proposed amendments of three hundred and thirty-second portion of Delaware Avenue, the portion of Seventeenth Street, Pennsylvania Avenue and Delaware Avenue. The alley situated south of Jean's Avenue, parallel to Highland Avenue, and the portion of Second Street, which is formerly World Hall Street, north of Walnut Avenue respectively, and setting the public hearings for, uh, the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. So we, item, excuse me, a motion to place those items on the Agenda Items, item number three.
I make a motion, move forward.
Second.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanbauer.
Yes.
This item has been approved.
And that will be item number two-three.
Okay. Want to go through and review the Agenda Items?
Agenda Item. Mr. Chairman, if, if councilmembers under review have a question on Agenda Item, uh, we're happy to listen.
Agenda Item Number One, City Council tanks for the month of October twenty-two received by. Agenda Item.
Agenda item number two. Agenda item number three. Agenda item number four. Agenda item number five. Agenda item number six.
Yes, I'm going to speak on agenda item number six. Um, I'm basically going to echo the same sentiments that Mr. Handley had spoke about earlier. I definitely expect, especially with us using A.I.R.P.A. funds, um, for me personally, I don't feel that a lot of our funds have been used for a lot of what it was meant to be used for in the beginning. And the Sal Magley Stadium has not been, uh, as accessible to the whole community. And I'm talking about the whole community because we represent the whole city of Niagara Falls up here. So, um, being that we're using those funds, I will be, because we can say it's going to be, you know, accessible to the community. I'm going to be the watchdog for that. I promise I will be hounding like a hound to make sure that when people in the community want to use something that we're putting our funding to, that's, no, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm just talking, but.
If you have a question.
Oh, no, 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 actually, if I, I'll let you know if I'm asking you a question. Okay? So, no, no, I mean, I didn't, no, I'm not, I'm, I'm talking, I'm just talking.
Guys, please, we have a conversation, I've said this before, please let us have a conversation without interruption, please.
Unfortunately, the mayor interrupted me, so. But like, but I'm, I'm going to continue what I was just saying, is that at the end of the day, we have to make sure that what we're standing for up here when it comes down to, and I'm talking about these funding because we've had so many different meetings about these funding, and it seemed like a lot of the different issues or the different things that we asked for far as the community is concerned, has been ignored. And, and a lot of other things have been put in place, okay? If you don't mind, because that's kind of throwing me off a little bit. It has been ignored. And, and so for me, I want to make sure that if we're using one point four, close to one point five million dollars to fix up Sal Magley Stadium out of funding that could go directly into the community, let's make sure that we're actually letting, allowing the community to have better access, like Mr. Handley said, instead of just giving us the, the parking lot. Open those gates and let us get, use the inside. As a matter of fact, let's find better ways to generate revenue for the city if we're going to put that kind of money into it. So that's what I had to say concerning Sal Magley, number six.
Okay, and I, I'll make comment. I think we've reiterated that we are planning on doing that. So thank you, Councilmember Miles.
Absolutely, I get it. I just want to make sure you're going to see me.
I do just have a question. I'm not sure who to put a question to. So if Sal Magley events, um, members of the community or organizations can still go through the event committee to utilize Sal Magley Stadium? Is that true?
Yes, what we hope to do with these renovations is actually make it multi-purpose. Because prior to the renovations, it's a grass field.
Right.
And grass field can be difficult to remediate after activity. These remediations will turn it into multi-purpose. In fact, the design is to also accommodate other sports in there. But not just sports, because once it's a turf surface, there is, um, you know, obviously, there's care required, but it becomes a more multi-purpose facility. So that's the goal. And by the way, the facility, you know, the facility, um, was first constructed in nineteen thirty-six, opened in nineteen thirty-nine, has had very little, uh, work on the surface, on the, on the field area since then. Uh, there was some work in nineteen ninety-nine when the district took possession during their, uh, the new high school. Uh, but not much has been done. As a matter of fact, if I may, Mr. Chairman, speak to number six in the change order, the structure that was discovered as they were removing the sprinkler system appeared nowhere on any of the engineering maps, on any of the other. So this is a, this change order is a function of the fact that this particular item that was found underground, it was a concrete slab, um, was found nowhere, just, just as an indication of how long anything's been done on that surface.
Agenda item number seven. Agenda item number eight. Agenda item number nine. Agenda item number ten. Agenda item number eleven.
Agenda item number three, one, one. Our constituents have been clear, making it very clear that.
Three, one, one has been pretty much a middleman to the middleman. You get calls just to get another ticket number to basically wait, to wait, to wait. That's nine, let's see here, ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, which would be seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cent a month. I think we probably want to kind of look at that because we don't want to basically, uh, what is it, practice insanity? We do the same thing over and over, expecting something different to happen. And if it, if it's not working, really on behalf of the constituents, because it's our dollars, we should probably think of something else, or maybe tweak it so that, that it may work more so for the community.
And I don't want to speak for Tony, but I think what we've done, it's been implemented for a year. I think we are looking at it. We know we've had some issues that we have to improve upon.
I can simply say that one of the difficulties has been the technology piece, which now, um, you know, our I.T. department is working on to get residents to actually track tickets. Um, you know, we initiated three, one, one to simplify where a resident could contact for information. And it's true that at this point, the call center was the first piece to this. And the call center certainly is critical, um, to give, to give residents an easy way of access. But, I mean, the next phase of this is the ability for a resident to not only, um, not only be able to make the call, but once they receive that, that item number, to be able to track it, you know, to the extent they have technology, to be able to track their, their request as well. So the, the, it's true that there's evolution within the system, and, um, we're working our way through that.
Is that plan to take off the, we were talking, I was talking to residents the other day. I think maybe it comes from woman Bax. Is there plans to take off the action line from our website once this gets fully operable? Or is it going to be a dual system?
We've talked about that, and I think the question now will become whether or not, if some people are comfortable doing things the way they need them, um, we may want to ultimately mean people. And just a few more on the system.
Okay.
Just a quick one after those two systems. And this plan here with this technology is still not, right, they're two separate systems?
The, the three, one, one only deals with code enforcement D.P.W. The action line deals with other things.
With everything, okay.
They may have questions about permit, they may have questions for the city clerk's office, they may have questions for the engineering department, they may have something that they want to get to the executive office. So the goal, as the mayor said, is to ultimately move all of that with three, one, one. But at the time when we were, when we were developing what we were going to do here, those were the two most significant departments that calls were coming in for, and that was what we directed this to. Just the initial buildup.
Doesn't have an act as well.
Agenda, you ready to? Are you ready? Okay. Agenda item number twelve. Agenda item number thirteen. Agenda item number fourteen. Agenda item number fifteen. Agenda item number sixteen. Agenda item number seventeen. Agenda item number eighteen. Agenda item number nineteen. Agenda item number twenty. Agenda item number twenty-one. Agenda item number twenty-two. Agenda item number twenty-three.
Twenty-three, I'm definitely, I'm actually glad that we are shifting this, um, you know, more towards equality when it comes down to the non-home state and home state, because that whole tier system is killing us in the business arena. We're not being business friendly when we continuously tax the businesses so much higher than we, we have to kind of find a way to kind of meet in the middle. But, yeah, I, I'm, I get that.
Agenda item number twenty-four.
Mr. Major, I'm going to have you give a, um, we had a discussion about this the other day. If you could give a quick explanation on, on the city's position on this. I think it's, it's important for the citizens to understand this one.
Mr. Chairman, without appointing two of the details about it, because it still isn't active, uh, this is active for the nation. The management is on appeal by the city. Originally, it was a jury verdict in the amount of one point four million dollars, uh, earlier this year. The city, uh, the city has appealed that, currently on appeal. There is, of course, the additional costs going forward with the appeal and the possibility that the appeal would not be successful. We're continuing on with that at the moment, but, um, there is an opportunity to, uh, address the issue and, uh, and of course, the, um, the amount of money that we have right here in the settlement is one that we believe is, uh, fair and in the best interest of the city moving forward, to save the city a little bit of money on that verdict. So therefore, we would, that's what we're recommending going forward on this matter.
Agenda item number twenty-five. Agenda item number twenty-six. Agenda item number twenty-seven. Agenda item number twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, um, I, I looked over, I, I have a couple of them down myself.
That kind of, uh, struck me as kind of, I feel like they are of importance, which was the Home Improvement Registration Review Board and the Fiscal Advisory Board, but we also have people who actually, um, tonight that got up and they actually volunteer for other boards that are still available and, and somewhat active now. So to dismantle those boards, I think, uh, we, I think it would just make sense for us to at least reach out to those boards and see what it is that they can do if they haven't been active, why or whatnot, but to just kind of remove them. It would, it, for me, and this is personally, I just want to, I, I mean, and this is just for me reading and getting this information, just to at least have the conversation. I don't think a conversation would hurt anything before we actually completely remove the board.
So let me, let me tell you where this came, came from, then I'll let.
Well, the fiscal, fiscal review board was a set board for a set period of time. That was it. They were here when we were, uh, having budget issues back a few years ago when we had the casino money. They got together and they gave the city ideas. It was a set board of a set people for a set amount of time. These boards are on a list that, some of these boards haven't been active since the seventies, all right? This, that board shouldn't have been on the list. It was a given period of time, half of the people on the board, I hate to say, are deceased. But that board was a given period of time that the council put together to have them, was just before I came on the council, to give them advice on what they were going to do with a bunch of casino money. That's the only purpose of that board. It, it existed for a given timeframe and it's gone. We're just taking it off the books.
And I think it's important to know, know, Councilman Thompson.
We sat down and the council was given a, a, um, a document with all these boards. And when you say we should reach out to some of the board members, ninety percent of these boards don't have any members and haven't had any members for ten years. But what we do is we get a list of boards with, with, um, old names on it. And we said, you know, we need to clean this up a little. So what we did, we met with the administration, we went with Mr. Major, we went through these boards and we said, these should no longer be on a list. Now, Councilman Miles, what you can do, if you want to, you have the, you have the right to start any board you want. So if you feel, so we're going to decommission these, but if you feel that you want to start a new board, you will be able to do that, you know?
Absolutely.
And then the same thing, the Home Improvement Board has been active since the eighties.
Right, right.
You know what I mean?
I mean, some of them have.
Some of, some of these boards were created, uh, in a different time and place. There's, there's water boards and stuff that are listed on there that went away when we formed the city water board. What was it, thirty years ago? They just never took them out. So we're, we're getting this big list of all these boards when they're, they haven't been active, so why are they still there? That's all this was.
Agenda item number twenty-eight. Agenda item. Agenda item number twenty-nine. Agenda item number thirty.
Stop.
Okay, go ahead. You can go.
All right, number thirty. This here is simply a resolution saying that we support trying to do something good for the city to move it forward. People are confusing this with thinking that we're definitely absolutely going to send C.B.D.G. money on this. That's not the case. This is simply a support letter. That money that everybody's talking about was just one, something we could do if we wanted to do this. This support like this is sending stuff to the state, saying, state, we want to do this, will you help us? Will the state give us money? Without something like this, you're limiting our options of where we can get money from. This is simply a letter saying, we want this power, we've been working towards getting this power, we think that this will be a plus for the city. This has absolutely nothing to do, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, with the funding of this. This is simply a support letter that will be able to say, look what we have, please help us get the money for this. It's, it's, this, there's nothing to do with where the funding's coming from. This is a letter to give us a, a bullet in the gun to try and get money from different sources.
And for residents to know what it is, is this, this resolution will be sent to Governor Kathy Hochul. It will be sent to our state senators, it'll be sent to our assemblymen and the Niagara County legislature, just indicating that we have, what we have all voted on already, where we are in this process.
Okay, so as it pertains to the project now, I've been. Well, I've been at the hearings in regards to, and I've asked the same question over and over. My question has been, who's going to be fiscally responsible for the hundred and fifty million dollar project, the construction? My other question was who's going to be, and all of it is fiscal, fiscal responsibility. Who's going to be, um, responsible fiscally for the maintaining, maintaining or the maintenance of the structure, the hiring of the wage, the hiring wage of the staff, the interest rates that will cost millions yearly because of our bond rate, the eminent domain lawyers fees that we're paying now along with the court fees that's going to come along with all of this? And I also, um, asked very clearly, um, if we reached out to outs, exterior, um, investors, private investors, because for me, for anything that's worth its weight in salt and that will actually bring so much to the city of Niagara Falls, I, I, I wonder why investors aren't like jumping out of their seams to actually put money on it. So, so we all heard, now, we, again, we heard about, and seeing, I, I guess the question that I'm asking is, is that, is this a blanket, um, very broad level of support? Is it saying, I support this and whatever comes along with it? Because right now, because these answers can't be completely answered, and I've asked those questions often. Being that.
That's the answer.
No, 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 no. Oh, well, I'll tell you what they said. They said it's pretty much on the city right now. Oh, and let me, no, let me rephrase because I didn't want, I, I, I kind of felt some way because I felt like my intelligence was insulted. You don't have to acquire land to have a conversation. That was the answer that was given to me. Well, we can't talk about money because we have to acquire the land first. That's a lie. You don't have to, and talk to, to talk to anyone outside of government to talk about, hey, I have an idea. And this is going to bring a lot of stuff that, that's going to help our city. And the other portion is, is our city has not really been spoken to as pertain to, like, these are ideas, because I'll tell you what's, I'll tell you what I'm looking at. I'm looking at a splash pad, I'm looking at a splash pad that turns into an ice skating rink, which we already have a splash pad that's at, at, at the second largest park in New York State, which is Hyde Park. And we also have an ice skating rink that is underutilized, where is it at, at the second largest park in New York State? And then we talk about a rock climber. So my thing is, is I ask about diversity because I don't know too many people that ice skate. So how much of the community has been surveyed? Have we been to the whole community and said, what do you want in this park? Because that's one thing that I have not seen. I've been up here and I've been just waiting, waiting to see for someone to say, you know what? Let's take the time to find out what the rest of the community wants. Not what I think is best, because none of us up here, nor down in there, has all of the answers. But guess what? We, when we're talking about a small city of forty-eight thousand people, we can get the answers a lot quicker than we would in New York City that deals with millions of people. So I don't understand how we have. So I don't understand how we have not engaged the whole community. Because rock climbing a- 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 and, and ice skating, that's not, that's not, that's not all of Niagara Falls, especially where you're putting in that. It's, it's an area that's very dilapidated. It's an area that has plenty of boarded up houses and of course, we're talking about, you know, our, our, your good friends, our good friends, the NFR, right? So our thing is, is this, I can't fully put my support behind something that I don't know if this is gonna fall on the back of the city. If, if, if this, and if the New York, if New York, if the state supports it, what if the state says, oh, we'll give you fifty million dollars? Well, where's the hundred million dollars gonna come from? Who's gonna pay that interest rate when we have that triple B negative rating, bond rating? That's gonna cost anywhere between six to nine, po- possibly ten million dollars a year. We can't even afford to maintain the budget that we got now. We're barely afloat, we're just, you know, and just thank God we're halfway decent, the, the budget is a decent budget this year. However, my thing is, is this, this is a big price tag. A hundred and fifty million dollars in the city of Niagara Falls is a big price tag. So I can't just say, you know what, I'm gonna just give a stab at it, especially when I feel like we haven't as a whole, as a community, have been engaged, and I'm talking about the whole community. I'm talking about the, the, the halves and the have-nots. The people, cause it's not just a black and white thing in the city of Niagara Falls. So if we're gonna put something in the city that's supposed to support the whole city all year round, let's make sure we include the whole city. What did they say with, um, uh, the, I forgot the name of the organization, but nothing about us without us. Nothing about us without us. Don't put something in my, and don't say that we should support something and you don't include me in the process. Don't come and tell me, that's one thing I don't like, don't tell me what you think that I should want. So I think that's, so honestly, honestly, I'm just looking at it from a perspective as we're looking at big dollars, but then I'm looking at what's gonna be inside. And then we're talking about an outdoor amphitheater. That's only gonna be utilized for what, three, four good months? And that's if Mother Nature don't rain the mess out of us, right? So, and then we also have an indoor theater, but guess who also has an indoor theater? Our neighbors, the Senecas, that's right across the street. So are we gonna be?
Now it's big.
Yeah, but guess what? Are we, so are we, watch this, here's the beautiful part. So are we going to be in competition with them? Because guess what? The money that we spend on our city yearly, they make that like that. So I don't think we, we don't have the juice to be in competition with the Seneca nations. So I'm think, so all that I'm asking is, is that, um, and as Mr. Scott had mentioned earlier, I'm hoping that, you know, we're, we're making sure that this is on behalf of the good of the whole community. Because a- a- and this is not some exterior-driven project. So for me, again, it has not been, and it has not been, this is not just an opinion, this is the truth. It has not been, we haven't engaged the whole community. The whole community. All we got is articles in the paper, n- news, you know, stuff on the news about, you know, the, the Centennial Park project and it's gonna have this and it's gonna have that. But when have we asked? We're, we're gonna be the ones that's supposed to support this all year round?
Right.
How are we gonna, if we're supposed to keep this going, well then, I should have some say, we should all have some say. We didn't. That's all I'm saying.
Well, this in front of us, this in front of us. We're trying to have business here. Uh, this in front of us is simply a chance and a way for us to get more bullets, to get more answers, because now we'll be able to say, hey, what can you do for us? Without something like this, you're shooting yourself in the foot.
Well, what about, the question I have is, is that, what about the engagement of the rest of the community? Cause what you're saying right now has nothing to do with the fact that.
The whole community. The whole community. This is just something that has been brought out and s- put in our face and said, this is what we're gonna put out. The whole community has not been engaged. And you can't no, can not one person up here or down there tell me any different. So this, I, I wanna be honest, we, we're gonna be straightforward.
So let me, let me respond to community engagement. We had a public hearing, we actually had two public hearings. That's community engagement, people come and speak. We actually voted about three or four resolutions that were on agenda items about this project that people were able to come and speak. If you have not gone out, if you have not gone out.
What was in there? Because what, what, no.
First of all, this outlines about everything we've done. If you have not gone out to your community.
Our community. Is it, is it, I thought, cause I thought, oh.
Okay, our community. So, okay, I'll say.
You said a mouthful, my friend.
I said, your community. I speak to people, you speak to people, we all have different communities.
That's taxation without representation, my friend.
So, so if you have not gone out individually and talked to people about this project, then that's on you.
Oh, we have.
Myself and the mayor, we're at a meeting on Saturday where we talked about this project and got information from people. So when you talk about community engagement, I think you're missing the boat. You're not doing your job to get community engagement.
Taxation without representation.
So let me, let me a- address a couple other things and then we'll move on. Councilman Miles, I sent, I sent this entire, this entire council information about the Nexus Center in Utica. I sent about every, there was an article about all the arenas, sports arenas in New York State. Have you read that?
Oh, yeah, and guess what?
Okay, so. So let, let me ask you.
I'mma ask, I, I gave you, I gave you an example.
I did not say a word during your conversation.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm gonna ask you. There were some negative things in that article that, that you've kinda picked out. Please explain the positive things that have happened to Schenectady, New York, to Utica, New York, to Rochester, to Syracuse with their arenas.
So watch this, when, when you were talking about. Watch this.
Please, I will ask people, we're having a conversation. Well, this conversation is ours, if you wanna have your own, please leave the building.
It's supposed to be all.
And I will ask people to leave the building with law enforcement the next time you speak out of turn.
So here's the thing, so watch this. So, cause I'mma, I'mma give you.
So I just ask you, tell me the positives that tho- those articles spoke of.
Well, one, I can't find too much of, in comparison to what we looking at right now, it's not, it's not the same, one. But two, what I did notice is when, especially what I reached out to you about, cause a lot of the stuff that you sent me was talking about the stuff that they did borrow from, from the CBDG front.
Right, since you know that information.
Watch this, and when you sent that, and what did I say? I said, most of those projects were projects that they poured into e- places that already existed. They re- rebuilt what was already being utilized by the community, not a shot in the dark of something that's just an idea right now.
So here's, I'm gonna, I asked a question, you didn't respond, so I'll answer my own question.
Sure, absolutely.
Utica, New York, Utica, New York has a four-thousand-seat arena that brings, um, I think was two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars a year to that area in economic development. The arena brings people in. They're actually just opened a new arena in twenty-twenty-one that's gonna bring three-hundred, hundred million dollars for an economic impact that the state paid twenty-two million dollars for. Utica has decided to create two arenas in their city because, and I spoke to a Utica councilman, best thing that city ever did. So we can sit here and look at the negatives, but also tell people about the positives.
Okay, so hold on, but we, yeah, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Let me finish, so Niagara Falls, New York, let's start from Troy, New York Arena. Schenectady, New York Arena, Utica, New York, two arenas. Syracuse, New York, Almyra, um, Rochester, Buffalo. We are the only city of those size cities that does not have any type of sports arena. And when we talk about Centennial Park, there's a lot of parts to it, but the sports arena, if Utica, New York can support two sports arena, I'm, I'm in favor of this city pushing to look at some type of arena that can bring youth sports, okay? That can bring, uh, whether it be hockey, whether it be concerts, and you're right, we have to work with the Senecas, we have to work with the state. But to have a closed mind about this idea and always bring up the negative, you, you know, you, you're not having an open mind. And that's my last comment on, on this, this issue.
I wanna, cause I wanna address what you said. Here's the beautiful part, and I, I, I love dialogue with him, so don't think that we hate each other, we, we good, right? So, um, honestly, all of the, all of the spaces that you named in New York, uh, in New York, Utica, Syracuse, Rochester.
I forgot one, Binghamton.
Binghamton, absolutely, right? You know what they don't have? They don't have a natural wonder of the world in their backyard. Here's the part that you're not realizing. Niagara Falls don't need help bringing people here, we need help keeping people here. The problem is, is the rest of the city, we spend so much time and money in that corner. I said this in towards the beginning of the year, where seventy-five percent, seventies to seventy-five percent of the funding that we get from the state, in which, guess what? If there was a water rescue, whose fire trucks were going to get it out? Ours. When it comes down to things that happens that, you know, in that area, we take care, they're using our roads, right? And at the end of it, even to get to the state park, they still gotta come through Niagara Falls, right? So my thing is, is this, we don't need help bringing people here. Millions of people come here every year, even in its raggedy state that we have, uh, uh, when it comes down to our city. Even when our city is looking the worst, right? Millions of people still come here. I always say that if you, we shut down the, cause if we tore this casino down, we tore different hotels or whatever, tore stuff down around there and just planted grass around, our problem is, millions of people will still come to the city of Niagara Falls just for what? The water that flows down those cliffs that we have nothing to do with. The administration, council, county legislator, none of them have absolutely nothing to do with that water. That's God-given gift for us, right? So what I'm saying is to count, basically to s- what you're, to what you were saying, is you can name all of those different, and they had to do that to get people in their area. We don't need to do anything to get people here. If we take care of the rest of our city? Then people will spread out and sp- spend their money and not go. I said it twice, I'mma tell you, I, me and you had a conversation on the phone. My kids, they just had two birthdays in November and October. And for the last, I don't know how many years, where did I go and spend two, three hundred dollars for a pop? Over both bridges to Buffalo? Because we don't put anything here that's fa- I'm talking about family-friendly, family entertainment. This is not, 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 not a park of something that we can utilize that would actually, and we talked about that too, when it came down to Billy Bees and all that other stuff. But I'm saying is, is just, so to say that I'm closed-minded is definitely off. You're off. Because I'm saying that because I'm thinking actually out of the box, a little bit.
Can, can we, um.
But we can move forward as long as we know.
Let's go around, let, let's give one minute to each councilperson, if they wanna finish and then we move on. Tracy, any comments?
So, um, yeah, I do support this because something, um, interesting that, that you said, Dante, that I do agree with, and that is expecting, you know, doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. So we do have to do some things differently. I do support, I vote for yes because I vote for economic development, I vote for supporting our local and small businesses by bringing more people to the area. Um, I suppo- support the growth of being able to, um, create a landscape for more businesses, eateries, bars, and, and shops around that area, um, that are owned by locals. So, and I do, uh, you know, as an investor myself, I have invested in things and I would never invest in something that I didn't know where it would go. So I do think we have to secure land in order to, to take those steps, and that's what this resolution does. It's asking the state for the help for that.
Councilman Miles, you have thirty seconds, I have thirty, cause we talked about, so if I said anything.
Alright, well, look, I'm basically gonna just reiterate the fact that, one, we don't need to bring anything here to bring people. People are gonna come regardless, whether we like, whether you like it or not, that water's gonna continue to bring people here. Um, nothing's guaranteed, that, you know, we can, we can, all this is, right now is an idea. That's it.
Um, the hotel. Everyone in the tourist century says, all the reports say, we have to extend our tourist season. This is a type of event center that will extend our tourist season on, not just the summer months, but maybe extend into the winter months, which creates more revenue for the city and hotel and bed tax. And I think it's something that we have to look at that. And when you talk about, we have the falls, you're a hundred percent right. And that's why I think we have an upper hand on all those municipalities I just mentioned. Why would I go to Utica, New York for a hockey tournament when I can go to Niagara Falls and New York for a hockey tournament? That's it for me.
Myself, um, two things, Dante. Um, we did have this event center and stuff like that. The state took it from us and gave it to the Seneca and called it a casino. We had the convention center, I believe you're old enough to remember, you know, all the stuff that we had in there.
This is your last warning. If you speak again during this council, you will be asked to leave. I, I heard you speaking. I heard you before, so go.
So anyway, um. We did have that, so that was taken from us. I believe the state should cover this because they really owe us this. They did tell us they were gonna give us a replacement for the convention center. They gave us the little event center that we have. You can't have monster trucks and wrestling and all the fun stuff that was when we were young that they had at the, so in one respect, this is doing it. Two, you said, visitors are gonna come and we need to keep them here. This is the reason to keep them here. We got, the Rolling Stones come in here, they're gonna come and stay for the weekend. You know, because they ain't gonna be able to drive after the concert. So, you know, and this is something that could definitely bring the people here to Niagara Falls and keep them here for another day, and that's the, always the big thing, keep them here for another day. And to go back what you were saying about the state, I have actually put together and brought forward a proposal for surcharges on, down on the state parks for us as the host municipality. And I actually have talked to your cousin Ezra, I've talked to Ezra about that, about talking with you on it, and, uh, I gladly share you all that information, you can pick up the fight because you need someone of your party to be able to pick up that fight. So I'd love to share that with you so you can move forward. The way I've got this written out, it would bring us in, the money, that casino money would no longer matter to us and could be used for what it should be used for, which is economic development.
Uh, Councilman Miles, at our last meeting, I, I agreed with you, I also have some skepticism on the funding. Um, but in speaking with Chairperson Spanbauer, um, and Councilmember Tompkins, I mean, as I said, this is just asking the state to support the idea. This isn't specifically allocating any money, anything like that, um, what you spoke about the last meeting, again, which I, I shared in your concern. Um, so I think if this is just basically asking the state and presenting the idea as a whole, I don't think this does any harm to send to our state representatives to at least draw their attention fully to it. And then obviously, we will have more conversations from the council from the acquisition of the property to the potential cost of Centennial Park or whatever may be built there for us to approve. So again, I share your, I share in your concern about the costs and it's something that we as a council will have to work with the administration on. But again, I think this is a very basic step just to draw attention from the state. And I think this is definitely something I'm gonna be supporting tonight. And I hope you do too.
Agenda item number thirty-one. Agenda item number two.
Is this the, um, cannabis, right?
Yes, okay, so that's another thing, I just definitely would like to have, um, further conversation when it comes down to that because, and I had, um, made mention to, uh, I was talking to Mr. Major earlier. Um, black and brown people have been dealt an ugly hand when it comes down to cannabis. It's a lot of black and brown people who are in jail right now for small possessions of weed, and it's legal now. So I wanna make sure that when it comes down to this business portion of it, that they're able to have a fair share in kind of like a pl- a level playing field as to how we implement this in the city of Niagara Falls? So it doesn't be a certain class of people that run everything and the, 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 everybody else become bottom feeders. So that's, that's my only statement I have in regards to that.
Agenda item number thirty-three. Agenda item number one, city hurricanes for the month of October twenty-twenty-two received and filed. Agenda item number two, city earthquakes for the month of November twenty-twenty-two received and filed. Agenda item number three, city first report for the month of October twenty-twenty-two received and filed. Agenda item number four, approval of second-hand dealers.
Call a roll.
Councilmember Bass.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins. Councilmember Zayjack. Council Chairman Spanbauer.
Yes.
This item has been approved. Agenda item number five, approval of the change order number three in the contract to AMD Environmental Consultants for asbestos monitoring for demolition contract.
Move it. Call a roll.
Councilmember Bass.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins. Councilmember Zayjack. Council Chairman Spanbauer.
Yes.
This item has been approved. Uh, agenda item number six, approval of change order number one in the contract to Louisville Prince and Sons for sale of the athletic field improvements.
Move it. Call a roll.
Councilmember Bass.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
County. That's what, that's what we're looking for.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Zayjack.
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer.
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number seven, approval of DCJ's motor vehicle theft and insurance fraud prevention grant award.
Move it.
DCJS.
Call a roll.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Councilmember Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Agenda item number eight, approval proposed addenda to agreement for property management city market, JR Militella Realty Incorporated, LTR Real Estate Services?
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number nine, approval of reappointment of city marshal.
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number ten, approval of reorganization in police department.
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number eleven, approval of the contract with VIA related to implementation of pre-bond systems?
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Give it one more bit here, so we can see what can be tweaked, yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes, I agree, this, I agree, and we do have to make improvements and I think they will be made improved. So, yes.
This item has been approved. Item number twelve, approval of the contract to BGA sixteen-seventy-five LLDBA Genesee Valley for fleet vehicles for the city of Niagara Falls.
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number thirteen, approval of the contract to prefer material LLC for the purchase of concrete?
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number fourteen, approval of the contract to Kenworth of Buffalo for the purchase of dump truck at cloud for Department of Parks?
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number fifteen, approval of the contract to Axon Enterprises Incorporated for Axon camera and license plate reader system for Niagara Falls Police Department?
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number sixteen, approval of the contract to Empire Emergency Apparatus for fire apparatus, GMP pumper trucks for the Niagara Falls Fire Department?
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Much needed equipment, yes.
This item has been approved. Item number seventeen, approval of the contract with Niagara County for information and assistance program Office of the Aging?
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman, Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number eighteen, approval of the contract with Niagara County Senior Nutrition Program Office of the Aging?
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number nineteen, approval of the contract for NBC for the right of entry and access to the city properties for maintenance preservation?
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number twenty, approval of the contract of Niagara lawn and garden equipment for lawn care and snow removal equipment for the Niagara Falls Fire Department?
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number twenty-one, approval to install an autistic child area sign for northbound traffic in advance of four twenty-two twelfth street?
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number twenty-two, approval to install alternate overnight content on the Oak Street between College and Vanderbilt avenues?
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number twenty-three, approval of locally adjusted halted and non-halted proportions?
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number twenty-four, approval to settle and pay personal injury lawsuit to Holly Adriana Torres Cummings in the amount of one hundred and three hundred thousand dollars?
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number twenty-five, relative to the reappointment to the border board?
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number twenty-six, relative to recognizing Roger, oh, we done, that's the number one. Um, Rob Bennett, com-?
Right.
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer? Council Chairman Spanbauer?
I'm waiting to give you a break because you've been talking so much, so, yes, yes.
Thank you, this item has been approved. Item number twenty-seven, relative to the twenty-twenty-three city council meeting schedule?
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number twenty-eight, relative to updating cities list of boards, committees, and commissions?
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Just to get clarity, so mayor, as a councilman, I'd be able to, if someone said like, this board that you guys took off, I would, it would feel this important, I would be able to?
By the city charter, council has the opportunity to create any board, you would just need a, you know, a majority.
Majority vote?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved. Item number twenty-one, relative to a mini city council resolution number twenty-twenty, um, two, one, one fifty entitled reconstruction of roads, insurance of bonds?
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, are you? Just so that the council's aware, I meant to comment on this.
Yeah, feel free to, I, I had talked to, to Dan on this, but if you wanna give an explanation.
Yeah. Apparently, in the past, uh, twenty-eleven, uh, bonds had been issued for some road reconstruction. And all of the revenue from those bonds had not been expended. And so what we're doing is we're reprogramming them, you need to do that under the finance law. So we're simply reallocating those funds for further road construction because they had been specifically designated roads and the cost did not rise to the level of the amount here. So we're gonna reposition that money to other roads.
And I appreciate that explanation because when I first saw it, I thought we were borrowing more money. And I did have a, a conversation with all my colleagues about this, so, and thank you, Dan, for giving us the information on that.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
You didn't vote?
Yeah, I interrupted you, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yes. The mayor was giving me a break.
I needed a break. This item has been approved. Item number thirty, relative to support of the city of Niagara Falls Centennial Park Events Center Project?
Move it.
Call a roll?
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
No.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Great resolution for moving the city forward, yes.
For yes, one negative, this item has been approved. Item number thirty-one, relative to acting of chapter three seventy-eight of Niagara Falls Codified Ordinances entitled adult use cannabis business location hours of operation?
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, I.
I had an opportunity to speak with the executive director for the Office of Cannabis Management this weekend personally. Mr. Mazur indicated, and it's true, we received, um, the regulations, um, I wanna say they came out in or around Thanksgiving. And, um, what we have to prepare ourselves for is there's many applications already in. And as Mr. Alexander indicated to me, the issuance of licenses will come out based upon what the Office of Cannabis Management determines. But what we need to do as a local community is have our rules in place. We don't know when the licenses are going to be issued because we don't control it. And we have limited, we have limited authority as the state law requires. So what we've done with items thirty-one and thirty-two is track the language of the regulations that were given. Nothing in here is the construct of, um, just local government. In fact, I had the opportunity to share this, uh, because I had it in advance, I had the opportunity to share it, you all got it. I know just recently, and part of that was because the staff knew that I was meeting with Mr. Alexander on Saturday. And I needed to make sure that when he took a look at it, you know, if he didn't like a paragraph or if he thought that a comma was in the wrong place, we would change it. Because it's our goal to sort of stay in line with what the Office of Cannabis Management requires. Um, and so we've done that with these two resolutions, I just wanted to make sure that the body knew that. And I think for a general public, it's very important to understand that the Office of Cannabis is really a great, a free, and a lot of the pressures to do this business. And, you know, the title of this one, the adult use cannabis business location hours of operation, I just wanna give you one example. The state gave us some rules that we have to implement. Just, uh, for one example, school grounds.
We will not be able to build next to a school ground, you know, within so many, um, school grounds, churches. We are not gonna put a, a cannabis business next to a, an educational situation, next to a church. And those were state laws, so now what we have done is put them into local laws and this will go to the zoning board.
Also, to add to that, that, remember the conversation we had upstairs is, um, that I would like to understand is, is say, for instance, someone does create their own business in one space and then let's say within a next, uh, sort of the space that they're supposed to be far as maybe a church or whatever the case is, somebody buys a building and wanna turn that into a church. Should that business that's already been there, when they got their license legally, be grandfathered into having that position? So if I wanna build a church that's, you know, close to a cannabis, that's, that would be my?
And that would go through the zoning board.
Right, right, so that's something that they would have to do, okay, because that's, I just wanna make sure that it's fair all the way across the board. Okay.
Yep.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved.
Item number thirty-two, relative to referral of the proposed amendment to the city of Niagara Falls zoning ordinance entitled zoning regulations related to the use, cultivation, production, and sale of the recreational cannabis to the city of Niagara Falls and Niagara County planning boards? Councilmember Bass? Councilmember Miles? Councilmember Tompkins? Councilmember Zajak? Council Chairman Spanbauer?
It's surprising, but this is where the state has moved forward to, yes.
This item has been approved. Item number thirty-three, relative to the rescheduling of public hearings Relative to the rescheduling of public hearings of the proposed abandonment of the three-thirty-foot portion of Delaware Avenue, a portion of Seventeenth Street between Pennsylvania Avenue and Delaware Avenue, the area situated south of James Avenue and here above the Hyman Avenue, and a petition of Second Street, World Food Street, North of Wallon Avenue respectively.
Move ahead. Call the run.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairman Spanbauer?
Yes.
This item has been approved.
Okay, let's move on to speakers for the good of the community.
Our first speaker is John Cooper.
Welcome back, John. Oh, we're gonna have to...
Good evening, everyone. Division Niagara Falls, I'm Mr. Alexander Gosselin. One-three-one-seven Portage, I was unable to make last month because one of your newest residents was born in my house. So my wife told me that was more important than coming here, so I hope you, I hope you can agree with. So we did an event last month called Feed the Falls for Thanksgiving, where we handed out over twelve-hundred meals to people in the community, delivered by people from all over Western New York that came to our building. We gave them the meals and drove them to people's houses. Some of them also went to the police department, fire department, and the Niagara Falls Air Reserve Station for those on duty. We also served a Thanksgiving meal in our building for those in need in our community that came to us. From that, we had a lot of good stories, which I'd love to share with you. If you'd like, you can come. People just reaching out, very thankful. Problems that we found other people had that we were able to further help them. But I, I tell you that tonight because we are doing it again for Christmas. And so I have for the council, I don't know what's the proper way to get this to you, if I can just hand it to you.
Just, yeah.
This is our flyer. On the number is a number that anyone can call for, to request a free dinner for Christmas. And if you have anyone that you know this is, this is a need that they have, I would love for you guys, as you are out in the community, talking to residents, to hand this to them, or at least give them this telephone number, so that they can call us and that we can get them that Christmas meal. It's turkey, mashed potatoes, I think corn, and then Christmas cookies that will be delivered to them. What we can do, though, as a community, is on the twenty-third, we'll be packaging the Christmas cookies at the Mission. Our location, again, one-three-one-seven Portage. We'll be packaging those Christmas cookies in bags to get ready for Christmas morning to deliver them. So if you guys would like to come and join us, if you can cook Christmas cookies, or maybe your spouse can cook Christmas cookies, we would really appreciate that. And then the twenty-fifth, starting at seven AM going to ten AM, we'll be cooking, scooping, and delivering all those meals that morning. So if it's something that anyone in this room would want to get involved in, also if anyone in this room wants to call or knows someone who may need to call for a free meal for Christmas, I'll leave the rest of the flyers I have in the back. That's all I have.
Thank you for your updates.
Yeah, thank you. You guys have a good night.
Next speaker is Ralph Gary.
I've been a resident of Niagara Falls thirty-nine years, and the problem I'm having right now, I understand, is my fault. But the issue at hand is the way your code enforcement officers react to people. They're ignorant, they're disrespectful, and they're belligerent. I had them come to my house, disrespect me to my face numerous times, and other people that I know of. You, my, Mr. Miles, you stated about the fact of how you want people to stay in this community. But when you got people that disrespect you and talk to you belligerent, and excuse my language, tell me that you ain't shit, and tell you to basically leave this city because you're, you're nothing, how do you want us to stay here? There's been more than one, I, I've owned my house for seven years. In the last five years, yes, I get it that I haven't been the nicest person to live by, because of all the stuff I have, because I work on cars. But to have someone come to my house, tell me to my face that I'm worthless, and they're gonna come in and take whatever they want to, rip stuff out of my garage, tow away cars, make me pay hundreds of dollars out of my pocket to do this in my house because my house got condemned, because they think they can do what they want, say what they want, act how they want. And it's not just one or two people, it's your whole entire code enforcement. And I'm at the point right now where I've already talked to different people, I'm ready to sell my house and leave, because it's not right. So I just want to know what it is I'm supposed to do. I, I'm in court right now, which is kind of funny that they did this this morning, being, I had to be in front of a George, a judge, at two o'clock in the afternoon, and all of your code enforcement tells me the mayor told them to do it. So if the mayor's telling them, oh, it's funny? I'm a, I'm a Niagara Falls citizen, I'm born and raised here, and this is what I gotta deal with? I spent eighty thousand dollars on a house to live here, to live the way I want to live, and this is what I get? Like, it's pathetic. Like, I, again, I get that the property of my house, the way it looks and everything else, my fault. I've been told constantly about it, my fault how it is. But that doesn't give them the right to speak to me however they want to, tell me that if I don't move my cars from in front of my fence, they're gonna tow them away. Those are legally registered cars. What gives them the right to pick up my vehicles and take them away? Or to pick up a registered boat and take that away? Or come to my property and put big old hole, or an excavator, red one, car, drive it over the lawn? Now I have to worry about if one of the pipes underneath my house is gonna crack and break because they destroyed my front yard? Like, when's enough enough? I don't deserve this. Yes, again, I get it's my fault for living the way I've lived. Unfortunately, right now, I'm at the point, I have twenty percent of my heart left. All this stress is literally killing me. They're putting a paste maker in me at the age of thirty-nine, which I'm not saying is their fault. With everything else, people don't deserve this. And then you got your other code enforcer in the back there, who comes to my house, looks at me and says, I'm gonna do whatever the hell I want, take all your shit. Like, is this what getting in and living in Niagara Falls gets you? Thank you for listening.
Sir, sir, if you want to, if you want to call me tomorrow, I'll speak to you on an individual basis.
The problem is, I've talked to him.
I know what it is.
I've talked to the guy in the back. He told me over the phone...
Okay, the time is up. I just gave a simple thing. Time's up. Thank you.
So basically, it's, it doesn't matter.
No, I told you, you have an option to call me and I'll speak to you on an individual...
Calling gets nothing. It gets me people that just say, oh, well, we'll talk to the mayor, when the mayor's the one doing it.
Okay, time's up. This is next speaker.
Get a better job.
All right. Y'all done did it already, so, but I'm gonna give my piece anyway, because y'all approved this Centennial Project thing you got going on. I'm gonna be very honest, y'all outdated. You're not tapped into what is current and what is happening. I get what has been done. I personally feel like, I get it, rock climbing, go ahead, climb your rocks, skate, skate on, do, do what you do. We have skating already. We have these things already, and we need to really do something different, all right? Unfortunately, we have nothing directed towards the youth and young adults where they are. Let's build for them. Let's add for them. Because right now, it's media, it's TikTok, it's Snapchat, it's, it's Facebook, it's technology, it's creating videos and movies. This is what we're doing. But we need a multimedia center that's going to teach and train, because this is what they're doing. Unfortunately, the kids ain't going outside. We, we, we're online, we're on YouTube, so to Tompkins, to, to your, to your endeavors, kudos. I would suggest, y'all don't approve it now, that you add to the, the questions and the response that you want from the New York State. Because I'm not saying that rock climbing is bad, skating is, I'm not saying those negative. But there's a, there's some TikTokers, there's some influencers, there's some people who drive podcasts, who's trying to create a thing, and they want, they want to have resources that are not borderline, but top tier. But they can't afford a million-dollar camera, they can't afford these things, but there's something in place for them. And no, they don't all go to the high school. They don't, we need to just be current to what's happening. Mayor said it best when he was talking. As Niagara Falls and technology, we are not good. We are behind the ball so much that it is embarrassing to be able to execute and excel things properly. Unfortunately, the, my, 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 we're not reading the paper. We're not getting it, we're not buying it, we don't know that it's been posted. Rob Satch just got honored because his Facebook page is the page to go to for drama, information, and knowledge. That's just what it's for. So we are more internet-based. And I get that you have those who are, who do subscribe to the system that's been in place. I'm not gonna knock the, the season, as we call them, because we understand that they have that system. But you have to, you, you gotta do a better bridging of the gap between the two. Not just so that, so that, for me, I'm not the youngest, I ain't the oldest either. But there has to be a bridge of information that, yes, we have certain things in place where you can call. Absolutely, three-one-one, you can do these things great. But give me an app as well where I can get a click link access to the action thing that's on the website. We not going WW.Nagraf County. I'm just saying that we need to learn how to, how can we integrate where we have a system that's already been here, for those who've been here for a long time, like you are, welcome. And then also, how to engage those who are coming up next, because the translation isn't happening. Some of your seats are getting ready to be removed, but here comes another person, same age, same mindset, getting ready to occupy the seat. No shock to whoever you are in the room if you're here, be blessed. But what it is, is I want to encourage you all to figure out how to fuse the two. How can I get the information to those who have been here for decades, centuries, raising families, and the families that are coming up, evolving and growing? And y'all can do that by downloading Five Hundred and Seventy One Six Radio, it's an app that I have. Radio station right here on Main Street and Third. I got flyers, we can talk some more. Thank you.
Yeah, you weren't, but after me, honey. Again, I'm gonna tell you, I went to coffee with Chris, the mayor was there, and he talked about how this intimate domain really works. And that is, talking loyally, is that you put them in court and give them an offer, and then when the negotiations is done, they already got the property, and they just give you the rest of it. So it's really just taking your land regardless what it is, because in the end, they're just gonna give you a higher price. Market value, I don't know what that is. But when you start intimate domain, you better watch out that it's not around your property, where you got your businesses, Airbnbs, and all this other kind of stuff, you, okay? Because Mr. Spanbauer on Third Street, there's some houses across the street, remember a couple months ago, and we was talking about it, and how you were saying that, oh, those properties, the city's about to take their properties? So that's gonna be intimate domain, right? It's a whole lot of intimate domain about to go around, so everybody don't think that it's just down there or here. And then you talk about twenty-five years, you know some of these buildings in this city has been more than twenty-five years? So the reasoning is off. Let's get a list of how many, really, these homes and these buildings, what is the oldest? Now, talk about the oldest. Let's talk about the oldest, the first black house, I mean, the black house that a physician, a, a, a doctor owned on Memorial Parkway, four-twenty-four, that they gave into a member of the zoning committee, right? And if you look at this, you know, I do all your documents, any documents I really have, it got your name on it. Which, in the paper on, let me get it right, because I got so much, but you can't... I'm saying that it's been in the paper in November and December, but if you look at it, you know, you got a list of all these Airbnbs everybody wants to have, right? And people on the zoning board got their name on it. So how, and don't you think that's a conflict of interest, interest? You know, I, I do. I don't think nobody who's on these boards should be owning property or able to purchase property, okay? Now, another thing that I want to go through is, you talk about these programs and stuff. I can go through from two thousand and sixteen, we supposed to be having a, a approval of state admissible facility program grant, an amount of seventy-five thousand dollars for a Highland community park. I have been asking and asking, where is this park at? Still ain't got no answer. Talking about, I'm gonna talk about code enforcement for a minute, because code enforcement goes, I mean, I don't know if there's a, a extension from Zoom, but code enforcement needs to be checked. Y'all just put in the budget for two more code enforcements. But five-sixteen, Fairy, where y'all been boarding up with code enforcement and stuff like that, you need to go and look at the books, because I have it here. And some of them, the jobs is fifty dollars or whatever, well, one without even a work order is one thousand and something dollars. So you need to go back to your books. And how many houses is that? How many houses is in land banking that now has got signs for renting? I mean, you all are really out of hand. Also, too, I don't know, I asked the mayor about this, about, you know, we talk about always in the inner city and, you know, you know, the communities or whatever, but this is in LaSalle, okay? The ghost guns and stuff like that, that they act like they done wrapped up the case. But what about, I asked him, what about, do you know how many guns was out there? Do you know where these guns went? I mean, was any crimes committed? I mean, they gonna find out, so why close the case? I, I might be reading it wrong, but okay, I'll read it again. Anyway, also too, to the gentlemen, for the community, I had to start a business trying to get all these community, um, ground roots organizations together, or whatever. That's what I've been doing, and it's called, like I told you before, Crossroads of Niagara, oh, oh, sorry. It is Crossroads of Niagara. And we, what I do, and what I try to do with everyone, is making a difference for all people in our community. Mission statement, Crossroads of Niagara, main goal is to bring all grassroots organizations together to bring about social justice, to combat systemic racism, and to stop the oppression of the defenseless in our community, which I do a constantly basis. But also too, for, I do, I made a pamphlet for organizations to come and get. One has the mayor's list of everybody who was supposed to be on those boards for that American Rescue Plan or whatever. I don't see no work being done or no community involvement, but this, I have a list. I also have a list, or I should say a form, if you want to, and this is the original form that the city should be using, because there was no amendment to it, for if you want to own property, be it, um, uh, uh, land or lots or a building. So if you want these forms, come see me.
Yes, please.
So you, you meant to sign up for agenda items and good for the community?
Yes, please.
Okay, go ahead, start the five minutes.
I, I speak, and I hope that I'm listened to. And I'm not speaking to hear my own voice, I'm not speaking for myself. I'm speaking for the people. This body, this community, there's conflict. We just witnessed an hour and a half, two hours of conflict. It starts at the top. As a community, I ask that we listen, that you listen to the voices of the people. I ask that the promises that were made in the past are kept. I implore every single person in this room to do what's best for the community. I have a ton of passion for this city, and it, it rises out of my frustration. And I'm frustrated because there is so much potential here, so much potential here. So many good people here that are forced to express their displeasure in a way that you may not want it. But you gotta listen to the words that they're saying, but the reason for the words. The man behind me spoke about his property and code enforcement. I tried to speak about the American, or the Centennial Park Resolution. I was cut off mid-sentence. And that's okay? That's okay? Because we're five minutes? We can't go five minutes and six seconds? I understand, my, what I say is not important to you guys, Kenny told us that previously. But at the end of the day, this city is struggling. And it's struggling because there's all of this difference of opinions and promises and, you know, I'm gonna do it because I'm gonna do it without the input of the people. And you hear the people who are very upset talk about, okay, I'm afraid about the Black Club grants. I'm afraid about the, you know, the price that NFR is gonna get for the property. I was at these meetings, and there was not overwhelming community support. Yet, we pretend that there is, and we just keep on going, and we close our eyes, and we keep on going. Well, eventually, this is all gonna boil down, and we're gonna continue doing the same thing. I will continue to invest money in this, into this city. I will continue to do what I believe is best for the city. And I think a lot of other people are doing that, but they're getting pushed aside. And when they get pushed aside, they get frustrated, they get angry, there's screaming matches, there's yelling matches. All of this is, you know, all this negativity gets us into the wrong spot. And I'm not a religious person, but I listen to the prayer. And the opening prayer pissed me off, because it was contrary to what my gut tells me is the purpose, to do what's best for the community. When I hear some things, my blood boils. I'm restrained, but please, as this goes on, we're gonna meet every, you know, two times a month forever. We're gonna call a special meeting, which we could have called for cannabis, I don't know why, we didn't call it for cannabis. But allow the community to vote on, on items that are brought up, right? Like, allow the community to...
It's time, thank you.
Allow the community to speak.
Todd, that's time, I asked you once, you were given a time, please sit down. Thank you.
Bye-bye, Mr. Spanbauer.
Thank you. Any last comments, should we move on?
One of the things that I'm hoping that we do next year, which was practiced prior to, I think you, Councilman Tompkins had suggested it before, is that, and this is before I actually got on, is that we, we take in what the people are saying, and then at the next meeting, we can address some of the stuff that's said at the podium as, you know, so we don't sit here looking at everyone as they speak and then walk away, go home, and come back and do business as usual the next time. I think it would make more sense, and it would be fair to our constituents, that when they speak, at least we can go home, sit with it, write our notes or whatever, and come back and, and be able to address the issues that we may hear.
We did enlist the chairman remarks when I was talking.
Right, that's, so I, I can appreciate that, if we, if we were to...
And someone just needs to take the lead.
Okay.
The chairman.
The chairman, our chairman.
Okay.
That, that actually came from Mr. Soder.
Those are not given by the chairman.
Mr. Soder?
They actually came from Mr. Soder.
Oh, okay.
So I don't disagree, take the lead on it, so, you know.
I can't, I probably won't be chairman, so.
So, anything, anything else? Then we're gonna close this meeting.
If people weren't aware, tonight is probably Councilman Spanbauer, Chairman Spanbauer's last meeting here. Us here on the council decided to get together, and we have a platform to remember his time here as a city leader. What you have done today to make you feel proud? It's never too late to try. What have you done today to make you feel proud? You could be so many people if you make a break for freedom. What have you done today to make you feel proud? But John, thus, all of us that have served with you up here on the council are proud of what you've done. We know the research, we know your heart, we know what you've done to try and make this city a better place. People may sit there and they may say something, but you don't see them putting their family on hold and putting the time and the effort that it is to run for office, to be in office, and to take time to move the city. So from all of us here on the council, mayor of the city, thank you, and we're proud to have you.
Thank you.
Not for you to speak.
As you all know, me and this young man right here, we have had some disagreements. And what I can say is, even as chairman, I could, I could appreciate the fact that you're willing to have transparent dialogue in front of everybody, because I think that's what's, that's what's deserved for the people, for our constituents, for us to be able to have disagreement. And guess what? When we leave, he and I, we're okay. So I don't, I don't want you guys to think that, you know, we can't stand each other, and we were walking out, we were pouting, and at the end of the day, I can call him, and I have. And I was like, hey, man, what'd you think about this? Because he has more time, and yeah, I'm wise enough to know I don't have all the answers. So, I, so I do appreciate you even lending your time as, as well, so.
Well, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Just to find a, I have a final comment. Actually, it's funny, one of the things I was going to do, this, this plaque, it's a song by Heather Small, one of my, one of my favorite songs. I was gonna play it as my last thing, and I said, it's stupid. But after I get my statement, I'm gonna get it on, and I'm gonna play it, 'cause it, it's a great song, and it's a song that I listen to a lot in regards to what I have to do in this position, so.
I heard there was a beer in your hand when you were sitting there.
But so, first and foremost, I want to thank my wife, Holly, who is here tonight. Holly, just please stand up. For listening to me for the last three years about the challenges the city faces, and how we're gonna fix them. Holly supported my dedication to this job, and we often had an impact on our family. Thank you to everyone who supported me, which some people are in here, during my campaign, and continue to support me during my tenure on the council. And I also want to thank you to the critics that I had. I understand when you do this job, you are not gonna make everyone happy, but my critics, you made me a stronger person. So I also want to thank you. My council colleagues, to many of the discussions we had, thank you for your sacrifice that you have been made, and that you're going to make in the future. It may not look it, but I believe we had a good team. And I, I think, I enjoyed working with you, and I think you guys are gonna move this city forward with the, with the administration. Mayor Restineau, Tony, your administration has worked hard to put this city in a positive financial situation, and if people don't realize it, we are in the best financial, financial situation we have been in years. And that comes from your leadership. Keep on doing what you're doing. Just keep on doing what you're doing. Under your leadership, the city's moving forward. There's always unsung heroes. Thank you to the city clerk's office, Vicki. You know, you, you've just done a great job. Nadine has done a great job when she's been here. To a person that I know can't wait to see me leave, our controller, Dan, thank you for the, all the time you've given me, and all the information you give me. Chris, our corporation counsel, thank you. There is no doubt you guys are an unsung heroes for this city council, to be there to help us and support us. You know, without hesitation, I'm leaving this job feeling proud. Every decision I've made, every decision I've made, I believed I was doing for the best of the city Niagara Falls. And it's not they said, we may have two different opinions, and I'm not saying he's right, I'm wrong, but I've made decisions what I believe is gonna make this city forward, and I could leave here proud saying I was not making any decisions that I thought weren't in the best interest of the city Niagara Falls. I will still be involved in this city, but I'm going to do it in a situation that's gonna create less anxiety and less stress for me. So, I'm in closing, we have challenges in this city, and everyone in this room knows it. But the challenges are opportunities. And it's my strong belief, with the leadership in this room, if they work together, the challenges this city faces, they will be over, overcome them. And I believe, I believe you are gonna see this city move forward, and it's gonna be the best city we've had in years. So with that being said, meeting adjourned. One last thing, and on behalf of the council, city administration, everyone in City Hall, we want to wish everyone a happy holiday season and a healthy season. I mean, I want to get that song.
Get you some vans, man.
I was gonna play it. I already got it.
Now, are you gonna pay for the rights?
Heather Small.
John, are you gonna pay for the rights for this year for musician Dante's gonna blow you in, you know, even conditioned by trade.
Here we go, Dante.